All right. Try again. I'm Amy Harrington. I'm the mayor of the city of Sonoma and I'm delighted to welcome you to our first town hall. Thank you for being here. Take two. All right. So this is the first of a three-part series of town hall meetings that we're hosting. We had a subcommittee made up of council member Rachel Hunley and vice mayor Logan Harvey, and they worked diligently with our staff, our planning director David Storer, our city manager Kathy Capriola, and other city staff to put together this long-awaited housing town hall. And I think, gosh, when I first got elected about two and a half years ago, one of the first meetings I had was with Ann Colachitas here and some other folks, and they were saying, "When can we have a housing town hall?" So I'm so delighted that we're embarking on that tonight and that my colleagues have done such a great job putting this together. So the other thing about this meeting is that it's a regularly noticed meeting of the city council. It's a Brown Act meeting, and so we'll have to follow a few formalities in order to comply with the Brown Act so that we can all be here tonight. So we'll do that. We'll take roll. And on that note, I'll call this meeting to order and ask the rest of the city council to come forward. And from my right to my left, David Cook, Madeline Aggravanti, Logan Harvey, and Rachel Hunley, all present. And is that fine for the roll call?
That would be fine.
Okay. All right, great. The other thing I want to do is recognize the city commissioners who are here, and so many showed up, which is so wonderful that I want to make sure I don't miss anyone. We have Bob Felder, the chair of the Planning Commission, Bob McDonald from the Planning Commission, Ron Wellender from the Planning Commission, Kelso Barnett, Larry Barnett are all here, and that's really wonderful because the Planning Commission is so integral to our development of housing. And then we also have Fred Olubak from the Community Services and Environment Commission, and David Morell, also from the CSCC. Thank you for being here.
And Kimberly Blatner.
Oh, and Kimberly Blatner, of course, from the CSCC. And then there's Ryan Layly, who is here, and he is chair of the Sonoma Valley CAC and also the new chair of the Springs MAC. So it's great for us to have that integration here tonight. Thank you for being here. And I would just note, I am on a legislative commission related to statewide housing legislation, and that meeting starts at 7:00. So I will be leaving a little bit early, and vice mayor Harvey will take over for me at that time. And that's it, pretty much, unless somebody else wants to make a comment? All right. Good. And with that, we'll start the meeting.
Great. Good evening. Again, I'm Kathy Capriola, city manager. Thank you, Mayor Harrington. Just a few logistics. There is refreshments, so if you need something, it's a warm day. Grab something. Want to thank Whole Foods and the Sonoma Valley Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring that. This meeting is being recorded. It'll be on our website, and I want to thank our partner, Bob Taylor with Sonoma Valley Community Communications, and also be on Channel 27, so that you're all aware of that. And when we finish, there's an exit survey. We'd love feedback. As Mayor Harrington said, this is the first of three we're going to do, and we're going to be learning and improving as we go along, so please give us some feedback. What I want to start is give you, kind of moved into the next slide, I want to introduce two folks that you probably will hear from, and as, can I, I'm going to push the arrow down, sorry. So as Mayor Harrington said, we've got three town halls. This is the first one, and this is kind of Housing 101. So there's language we use, there's data, and we want to kind of put out some of that consistent for the city of Sonoma. The next one will be May 16th, and that'll be a panel of experts, probably four to six folks, different developers, affordable developers, market developers, different people that are really doing this work, and we can ask questions and learn from the panel. And then the last one is June 20th, and this will be an interactive community workshop. You'll be sitting around tables with your neighbors. There'll be maps, there'll be Lego pieces. We'll be talking about density, and where do you want housing, and what does it look like, and it'll be that kind of conversation, so it'll be a little different. So each of these are going to feel different, they'll somewhat build on each other, but if you can't come to all and can come to one, come when you can, and encourage more folks to join. So with that, I just want to do two introductions. David Storer, and David will talk in just a moment. David's our new Planning and Community Services Director. I know a number of you have had a chance to meet him and work with him. David's got a bachelor's and a master's in BYU. He worked for 20 years for about five different cities, finished his public sector career before coming back to us as a director of Planning and Community Development and as an assistant city manager. Then he spent about 15 years as a private consultant, working for public and private. So he's been on both sides of the fence here, and he's been with us almost six months already, so created a new addition to our team, so if you haven't met him, please do at the break. And then Jim Hyde. Jim, you want to stand for a minute? So Jim, we were really excited to find Jim, and we've hired Jim to be our consultant and help us put these together, and he has put together a lot of this information you'll be seeing. And Jim did a very similar process to this with the city of Healdsburg. They had a series of town halls, and then they created a housing action plan that has kind of moved them forward. And so we saw Jim's work in both the quality and the data and the information and the communication we thought would really work well for us. So Jim is a strategic real estate advisor and developer. He's an active member with Urban Land Institute, writes books, speaks regularly. He's trained as a landscape architect from the University of Idaho, and he's got a master's in real estate development from MIT, so he's a big thinker and has got some really great skills to bring to us tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask David Storer to come up and just ground us a little bit in general plan, then we're going to turn it to Jim. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Before I go on to my comments and try to figure out where the correct button is, is it the right arrow? There we go. I would like to thank our staff in the Planning and Community Services Department, Wendy, who's out there, Wendy, if you can wave, and we also have Sarah that's been working out of our office as well with the city managers team, and also Rebecca, our city clerk, has also provided some of the assistance tonight in creating the input and the data to help Jim in his presentation, so thank you very much, staff, for that. As we embark tonight, these quotations are taken out of our general plan, and the general plan is really two things. Number one, it's a policy document, and it's a map. And sometimes the map and the policies do or do not talk to each other, but here is the vision of the city council in our current general plan that gives us the vision as to why we're here tonight. We do hope to accomplish a few things tonight, not only just zeroing in, drilling down on the first town hall, we'd like to talk a little bit about some of the terms and the tools that are in our kit bag, so to speak, when it comes to housing. And if you talk to a planning nerd such as myself, the word affordable housing doesn't really mean anything until you put either a capital A there or a little a there, because it means so many different things to different people. And tonight, we're going to be talking about affordable housing in both terms, with respect to the law that we have to comply with as a city, and being able to understand how we can integrate with the state of California and be able to use the tools that they have, and also the governing regulations that we must comply with as a city. So tonight, we want to talk about some of the policy things, some choices that are available to us as we embark upon providing affordable housing, small a. And then we can also talk about the rub, if you will, the two ends of the pole, the polarity there, where you have density and sprawl, and how far that bridge is between those extremes, trying to figure out where our community lands and where we want to be. The solutions are out there. We know that people have done this in other parts of the country, even here in California. We don't want to be on the end of the spectrum of a certain city that has the initials HB, Huntington Beach. At the same time, we try to figure out where along that spectrum we want to be and meeting the needs of our community. We, along with our new governor and with the policies implemented by the state, we want to be able to figure out ways to accelerate housing. He's put a lot of money in the kit bag, and it's there for us to ask for it, some of it in non-competitive grants, which is really awesome. First-time millions of dollars are on the table for communities to seek funding from the state of California. We want to talk about an ability to experiment with ideas, and you'll see some great things that... 502-7341. Please call me, and then after I hang up on you, call Wendy, because she'll have the answers if it gets too complex. I'm just kidding. So please feel free to call me or text me at that number. Please tell me who you are so I can understand what the issue is, but I'm willing to answer my cellphone, and I also have an office number, so you can come into City Hall and visit me there. So with that being said, I'd like to turn the time over to Jim, and he'll take you through our slide presentation this evening. We will be having a Q and A after each module, so please feel free, and don't be afraid. We have microphones, some work, some that don't apparently. Jim?
Great. I'm going to try and do this well. Do you need the mic? We're recording it otherwise.
All right, so let's, okay, we'll try this then. Sorry about that. I know there's kind of an echo, so it's a little hard to hear. All right. Okay, so as we said, this is the first of three. This is the learned part of the trifecta of housing discussions, and tonight, there's going to be a lot of information given to you, so I hope you have a little chocolate before we get started, because I'll be trying to break it down and make it understandable, but at the same time, there's a lot of information, and as Kathy mentioned, I did this similar, very similar process in Healdsburg three years ago, and the thing that we learned, I'm going to share a number of the things that we learned from that process throughout the conversation tonight, just as backdrop, not as comparison, but just to give you some context. But one of the things we learned about that is it is, there are so many terms, and it's so confusing to people, that it's taken us probably three years to start having a really good conversation in our community about how we're going to solve this problem, because it's taken that long for everybody to understand all of the issues and all of the technical requirements. So we had a very aggressive thing where we thought we'd be, have it solved in six months. Here we are, three years later. So I'm saying that because tonight is a really important foundation for what's going to happen in the next two series, but it's also the beginning of a very long journey, but a very important journey. So as David mentioned, we've got two parts tonight, and I like to break this up because it is pretty intense, or a lot of information. So we're going to talk about our housing IQ, and that's a lot of the data and terms to start with, just so everybody has a common baseline. We'll do a little question and answer after that, just in case people have some, didn't quite understand some things or want some more information. And then we're going to move to a more data-driven piece to start creating context of what's going on in Sonoma as it's being measured, what are some of the measurements that you can use, and then what are some of the trends, just as a quick highlight, and the trends will feed into some of the work that we'll be doing in future sessions. So I wanted, just wanted to talk a little bit, just for a second, about my background and how I got into this, because Kathy mentioned I've got a background in landscape architecture and real estate, but this started in graduate school, and I did my thesis on affordable housing in resort communities. And at the time, there was this, you know, very urban institution, and all the professors were like, "Well, why does it matter in resort communities? We're about big downtowns, and how do we deal with affordable housing?" And the long, after a semester of studying this, the basic thesis and what was proven out was, this is not just about social justice and social equity. This is about economic sustainability, and housing is as much a part of your infrastructure in your community as water and sewer is. And so what we were saying is that if the communities do not get in front of a balanced housing portfolio at the beginning, and they're playing catch-up, you know, long after it becomes a crisis, they'll probably never work out of it. So if you want a sustainable economy, and the thesis here was that communities that are based on the quality of life require that people live in their communities, and I can talk more about some of the things we learned and some of the case studies, but we'll save that for another time. So some of the key takeaways are, first of all, we are all learning. I go to a lot of these presentations, and people want to know, "What's the answer?", but there is no single answer. This is a very, very complicated, complex issue, and everybody is continually learning, and more importantly, each community has its own solution set, and what we learned in Healdsburg was, you have to develop a language that is comfortable for who you are and your culture locally. So there are terms that are kind of the terms of art in housing, that are good to know what they mean, but there may be certain things that really resonate with you in your community, and what you stand for, and what you believe in, and you need to adopt that and write that, and that becomes a part of your policies. In our case, it became a part of our housing action plan. So we're all learning, and we're continually learning. I'm here, I'm learning a lot about Sonoma, and I hope I'll learn more from you as we go through this process. It's more than affordable housing. Everybody focuses on that, because that, for a lot of people, is the big issue, and based on the great work that, you know, Sustainable Sonoma did, many people feel that that issue is twice as big as any other issue that they were presented with or asked about through that survey that Sustainable Sonoma did. But affordable housing is connected to transportation policies, it's connected to land use policies, it's connected to local wages, and all those kinds of things. So there is a very complex ecosystem that supports housing. Housing is symptomatic of many other things. Sonoma's not an island. I think a lot of these communities are trying to solve their affordable housing problems within their city boundaries, and we operate as a region. Families live between their two jobs, if they're a dual-income household, so we have to start with what you can control or what you can understand, and that's why City of Sonoma has used data related to the City of Sonoma, not the larger valley. But we have to think about how what happens here impacts or is impacted by what's happening around the city boundaries. And there is no single solution. Again, everybody's kind of looking for that one easy answer. There is none. In fact, a friend of mine used to call, "There's no silver bullet, there's a thousand silver BBs," and it means there's just all these little tiny actions and little things that have to be done. And finally, this idea, David talked about the willingness to experiment. One of the things I've witnessed in 30 years of doing this is, there is, the perfect becomes the enemy of the good, and that has really paralyzed us from trying new ideas. We keep waiting, they want, "Well, we need one more study." Well, how's that really going to work out? Well, can somebody predict this? And we're at a point where we just need to try some things, and that was really our call to action in Healdsburg. After about two years, it's like, we've just got to try something, and we've had some pretty innovative things that have happened recently, but it took two years to get people from wanting yet another study to say, "Let's just try it. Let's see how that works." So I want to talk about your housing IQ. So we had this great survey that Sarah put together, our website, where's Sarah? Thank you for that. How many of you got a chance to take the survey? Good, so it looks about half of you. So we're basically, it was a way for us to get a better understanding of what would be helpful to share tonight, and also for a chance for you to start getting your head into this process and this conversation. And so one of the questions we asked was, "How would you rank your housing IQ?", went all the way from novice to learning mode to advanced. We had one in there that was baffled. The good thing was, nobody said they were baffled, so they either weren't being honest or nobody's really baffled. But we had, you know, about 16% that said they were novice, you care about it, but you're trying to understand it. The bulk of you were in learning mode. I follow housing issues, but I don't completely understand it. And then about 18% were like, "No, I really understand the terms." So I think that's just a little helpful context, but the more important question was, "What do you know about these terms?", and that again was the basis of tonight. So the graph, you don't need to read those, there's, I forget, about eight terms there. Yellow bars were basically, "Say what? I don't know what this means at all," and the green bar was, "I totally understand it, fully understand." So things like density bonus, discretionary approval, deed-restricted housing, not a lot of understanding. Affordable housing, everybody said, the majority of people said they fully understand. We'll see, because there's a pop quiz tonight, and then you see everything in between. But anyways, this helped us organize the presentation, at least helped me think about how to use our time together wisely. So we're going to start with the first pop quiz. So is there a difference between affordable housing, capital A, capital H, and affordable housing, little a, little h? How many say, "Yes, there's a difference"? Okay, now how many people are going to be brave enough to say, "No"? Okay, all right. Who said yes, and why? What's the difference? Okay. One more. Larry?
Government.
Okay. Both close, but probably not fully right. So affordable housing, capital A, capital H. And again, this was a little bit of term of art that we developed in Healdsburg, because these conversations would go on in meeting after meeting, and we were talking past each other. So we've defined capital A, capital H. As Larry said, it's a protected pool of price-restricted residential units, and it's typically price-restricted and managed by government, but not always. The main thing is, you have a mechanism on the deed, and we'll talk about that, that limits who it can be rented to, and it's usually tied to income. So this is always a part of your affordable housing stock, and there are some terms that will burn that off over time, and you have some of those coming up, but the main idea is that this is a long-term. So when you hear about things like low-income housing tax credits, or an affordable housing project that somebody did, those are typically in this category, capital A, capital H. Affordable housing, little a, little h, are those, as somebody mentioned, they're delivered by the market, and they're maybe, you know, a little older, they may be a family, in a family trust, and they're trying to help out some local employees, so they rent them for below-market, so they are still affordable, but they are not price-protected. And what happens with these, so these become an important part of the kind of stock of your affordability, but you cannot count on them in the future. And what we are seeing in Healdsburg, and you're probably seeing the same thing, as the family that bought those in the 60s or built them in the 60s, and they pass away, now it passes to their estate, and the state has to maximize the value, so they sell them to somebody who then pays a premium, and then renovates them and brings them up to market, and you lose that little a, little h, affordable housing. And this was where we're having a lot of conversations, talking past each other, so it's a very important distinction. The other thing that was in our list that people said they didn't know a lot about or didn't understand was the idea of affordable by design housing. And so this is market-supplied, little a, little h, affordable housing, that is rented, sold, or operated, but it's for less than what you might see in a typical market largely through the design consideration. So it may be a smaller unit size. That's why we see such a fascination with microunits. It may be higher density, so the cost of the land, 20 units on the same piece of land versus 10 units on the same piece of land will actually be less per door for the land piece of that, so you can actually bring the price of those down. Reducing the parking requirement. Parking is probably one of the biggest challenges in terms of affordability, because it, number one, it drives up the amount of land that's taken, it's an expensive proposition, it's an under-utilization of land, and then it also facilitates a behavior that we'd like to get, maybe start to tone down, which is more walking, more bicycling, and less automobile-driven. Tats or multifamily housing. Energy-efficient or green housing. A lot of the affordable housing programs are having green requirements, because they may not be less to rent, but they're less to operate. So your total housing burden actually gets reduced, and when you put them near transit, your total transportation and housing burden becomes less, because you could have one car, you could use car share, you could use transit, so your total cost of housing comes down. So these are all the interconnections that are important. And then cohousing, how many people know about cohousing? Okay. So cohousing's interesting, because it removes the market risk from the builder and developer, and basically could strip the profit piece out of it, which allows the overall market piece, the market price, to come down, and typically you might see a reduction, unit for unit, of 15 to 20%. So it's a more of a delivery strategy, but it's also an effective way to do affordability by design. I'll tell you what, I'm going to do that later in the presentation. I've got a slide to talk about that. Thank you, though. Deed restrictions. Okay, so we talked about capital A, capital H, being primarily deed-restricted housing. So deed restriction is the primary tool by which housing is price-protected, and there's many things, all of you probably own real estate, that has some kind of deed restriction on it. You might not be allowed to build certain things, you may not be allowed to do certain uses, so deed restriction is a common generic tool, but in many affordable housing places, a deed restriction, it tells you who the housing can be rented or sold to, and it's typically income-driven, and I'll explain what that means and how that's structured, but it can also be employment-based, and it can be location-based. So I worked for CSU, Channel Islands, we did a housing project on their campus, where we built single-family homes that were sold to faculty first, local teachers second, military, first responders, all of that, and then lastly, it was general public. So it was an employment-based affordable housing, not price-restricted, but the idea of what they were interested was getting faculty and staff to be able to live near the campus and be able to stay in the campus and in the area, so it was a recruiting and retention tool, along with an affordability tool. So this is the next really important, so we've got affordable housing, starts at the top, enabled by deed restrictions. The next one is AMI, or area median income. So you get the deed restriction, which is fundamentally driven by and tied to the area median income. So this is how housing affordability, in the government sense, is measured and managed. It's the primary link between a deed restriction. You can only rent or sell to people who have an income level at a certain AMI, and it's based on the county data, and it's updated annually. So you can go to the website, you can find the number, I'll show you what that is. The important thing is, it's also indexed by size, household size. So a two-person household has an income threshold or ceiling that's different than a four-person household, so it kind of makes sense, right? The income, you want the income to be balanced to what people think the cost of living in that household would be. Did you have a question?
I have a question. Jobs and unemployment, and government, and traffic, their salaries and their income, or because of excluding, like, for example, self-employed or people that have a true job.
Yeah. It's developed by HUD and the state, what is it, HF, HF, HC, HD. So there's a state level on what the methodology is, but I presume it's based on taxable income or, you know, income that's driven and calculated or reported in the particular county that's being, yeah. So, just as a benchmark, the area median income for Sonoma County, family of four, is $84,165. So if you live in a family of four and you make more than that, you're above the AMI, and if you make less than that, you're below the AMI. Okay, so what does that mean? That's kind of an abstract number, but the way it works is, then there's another calculation that gets done, and affordable housing, just to make it even more complex, is broken into four primary categories when things get regulated, or developed, or funded and financed. There's the extremely low, there's the very low, there's the low, and the moderate. And the percentages you see are what percentage of the AMI is the ceiling for somebody. So somebody who makes 50% of AMI, let's say a family of four that makes whatever that would be, $42,080, something like that, they would be in the very, they would be in the very low category. And so that would be the certain kind of housing that would be deed-restricted, that they would be able to rent or buy, and then low and moderate. And when we hear a lot about low-income housing tax credits and things like that, they typically fall in this category, the supportive of the low and very low. One of the things that we learned in Healdsburg, and you're seeing across the state, is there is very little subsidy for the moderate, which is typically called workforce as well. We'll talk a little bit about some of the terms. So the people who are your teachers and firemen and work in the, you know, the places around town that support the local economy, sometimes don't make enough to buy a market race house, but they don't, but they make too much to be in the low and very low, and the market has a very hard time delivering moderately-priced housing, because there's no federal subsidies, no state subsidies. An extremely low, as you can tell, is a very low number, and takes very, very deep subsidies, which typically include everything from tax credits to big grants to land giveaway or land write-down, somebody owns a piece of land and something like that. So, you have a question here?
Are you going to give us the household and what person's household you think?
Let's see if I have the magic here. Well, I will in a second. I'll give you the two-person, but if you go, there's a website identified on here, and you go here, it actually spells it all out, all the way from 1 through 5. But I wanted to break this down a little bit more. So those are the abstract percentages. This is kind of spoken a little bit different way, because again, there's all this jargon, and there's all the terms that the technical people of the state and the government use, and then there's the terms that we in the marketplace use. So you've got extremely low, and when I was growing up, that was called subsidized housing, but that's a pretty perjorative term. Nobody wants to live in subsidized housing, so we don't use it anymore. So then it became affordable housing, and that kind of falls in that middle category, but then, again, people were concerned about living in affordable housing. So then it became workforce housing, and so it's become, and then there's also the entry housing and the starter housing, and those are, if I'm a builder and I'm out selling something, I'm selling an entry home or starter-level home, but it could very well be a workforce home. So you've got extremely low, and when I was growing up, that was called subsidized housing. But that's a pretty perjorative term, nobody wants to live in subsidized housing, so we don't use it anymore. So then it became affordable housing, and that kind of falls in that middle category. But then, again, people were concerned about living in affordable housing. So then it became workforce housing. And so it's become, and then there's also the entry housing and the starter housing, and those are, if I'm a builder, and I'm out selling something, I'm selling an entry home or starter-level home, but it could very well be a workforce home. It depends on what the, again, what is the language that resonates with you and the community? What's the language you want to use and attune to as you talk about your housing future? And then there's the above-the-moderate income. So this is stuff that is, has been above the 120%, and that's typically what builders would call their move-up, or their luxury market, as you begin to push up above that. So, now, in California, we have a real problem. I do a lot of work in Hawaii. Hawaii has a real problem. So the 120%, which was the moderate restricted level, that was kind of the, that was the upper end of affordable housing, is not enough. And as I said, we have people who make too much to fall into affordable housing, but not enough to buy market-rate housing. So there's this new term that's kind of evolved, and this became our term of art, or our buzzword in Healdsburg, called the middle income, or the missing middle. And this was people who made 121% to 160% of AMI, and you can kind of do the math, or I'll show you what that looks like. So that became workforce housing, and it became missing middle. In Hawaii, they use 140%. And the reason this is important is it gave us a benchmark, and the way we got to the 160 was, we said, what would it take, what would you have to make relative to AMI to buy a median-priced home in Healdsburg? And you had to make 160% of AMI just to buy a median-priced home. So that became one of the tools, and the way that we began to measure and analyze what we needed to do in terms of policy and production, and we just, there was a ballot measure that passed last fall, I can tell you a little bit about, that actually spoke specifically to this group, and what we've done in terms of changing regulations to facilitate and incentivize the development of missing-middle housing. So, to your question, here's a little bit of the data on two-person household and four-person household, and I've just put in the upper end of that bracket, because again, it's 0 to 30, so what you're seeing is the 30%, we've got the low, moderate, et cetera, et cetera, I've got the middle income in there. And then, on a very rough calculation, using that great tool called NerdWallet, anybody use NerdWallet? There you go, I can somebody in the back. You can actually put in what your income level is, you have to make a bunch of assumptions about what your taxes will be, and if you have any other debt. But this gives you a general order of magnitude of what kind of, what value of house you could buy. So the maximum purchase price for middle income, somebody here in the 134,000, four-person household could buy, would be $550,000. The other thing you'll see is that some of these upper levels, we don't even put a purchase price in. I mean, to talk about for-sale affordable housing in the very low category is very, very difficult. And we have a couple projects where we've done that in Healdsburg, complex, I'll get you in just a second, complex set of things that have actually allowed us to get for-sale housing, but the buyers cannot qualify for it. They can't get the mortgage. So what happens is the low and below is often supported much better by rental housing than it is by for-sale housing. Yes, sir, in the back?
Are, are, versus?
Into what?
Into median.
I think they, I think they are, but I don't know specifically how that gets factored in. But yeah, and I know in some of the other markets, like Aspen, that was a big issue, about how do you, a lot of these trust fund babies who are like ski, ski bums, but they, so they could qualify, but they had a lot of money behind them, so how do you actually balance that out? I don't know, David, do you know if that gets?
Well, I just, I know. I mean, I, I think it depends. There definitely are affordable housing projects, affordable housing complexes, that if you're, you may have a lot of assets, but maybe your actual cash flow and your income is moderate, then you are able to enter, even though you may have a couple million dollars in the bank. So that is, it does tend to be income-based, more than asset-based typically, which can be a real problem for a community, especially when you've got folks maybe from San Francisco Marin, or something, who can sell a large house, come in, and may have a larger amount, but their income stream is lower. So it's, it's, it's an issue that is tough to work through sometimes.
Yeah, the other, I'll get you in just a second. The other issue that we've seen a lot, and you probably have the same thing, is there, with a lot of these income levels, if you do not have a graduated and adequate supply of housing, you actually trap certain households in an income, a lower income bracket. So we've had a case where one of the restaurants got very egalitarian, and they gave all of their staff a raise, and nobody wanted it, because they would make too much money to be able to live in the affordable housing they had, and so they basically denied, or didn't want the, they ended up giving them something else. But it's an odd, you basically handicap, or handcuff people to stay in affordable housing, as opposed to creating a ladder approach to, you know, getting your feet on the ground and then moving out. So, and that's why that moderate income category is so important, and it's probably one of the biggest gaps. In our case, it was the biggest missing piece of our affordable housing stack. I'm sorry, let me get this, yes, sir?
Um, good day, so, back to... So, I do, I'm a lender, and so other cities, they have limits with how many, how much you can have in assets, that dividends and income counts income on your tax returns. But for some situations, because the mortgage payment's so high, even though someone's pegged here, it's not going to work, so how, where are we going to fill that gap in that section? Also, there are some limitations by census tract, not just the county AMI. Each census tract can have a separate limit for certain Fannie and Freddie products, so is that going to be taken into consideration as well?
That's much more complicated than I can probably answer right now, but it's one of those things that we can try to follow up back on. So, want to try and keep a little bit out of the weeds tonight, just in the interest of time, and just to make sure everybody's got kind of the basics understanding, so. Logan, you got a question?
So this is?
What's that?
It's all print taxes.
This is all print taxes, yeah, it's gross income. So let's take one more question. We do have a Q&amp;A period, and I'm happy to take questions as we go, because it's probably, while it's fresh on your mind, but I also want to make sure we got a lot of material to go through. One more question here?
Oh, I'm just curious, as I compared the middle income percentage there with like the idea of the 90% and the 9%, so the, the middle income here actually translates to the top 20% of annual earnings in the country. So it just seems to me that moderate, that's almost like Starbucks calling a small a tall, and that middle should be that the area median income, and then missing middle should be like low-end market rate.
Just in terms of terminology? Well, again, this is, we'll have a couple of workshops, we'll come up, you'll come up with a language that you're comfortable with, and means something to you locally here, but there's, I'm just giving you an example of what we've been through, and what are, within the industry, and the circles I travel in, the way the language is evolving. But there is no hard and fast, with the exception of extremely low, very low, low and moderate has at least something tied to it, which are state statutes and federal statutes. So the last slide on here is, so if you look at, and this was our conundrum in Healdsburg, if you look at the missing middle, in the county, again, this is not your localized income data, if you look at the missing middle, up to 160%, you exceed, and what somebody could buy there is 550, on a generalized basis, median home's value, based yesterday on Zillow, is $628,000. So you have the same problem we have, you have people who make a good income, 160% of AMI, but probably cannot buy a median-priced home. And the other thing, when we did all this data, you know, where you've got a very wide market range, where you probably have some million and multimillion-dollar homes here, and you've got some, maybe some smaller, lower stuff, that median, which is half of the homes or more, and half of the homes are less, is not really representative of how deep the market is in terms of those, those other sizes. So, again, just a data point, good to know about, we'll talk more about it in future sessions. Okay. The other thing that people didn't seem to know much about, or wanted to know more about, is inclusionary housing. So we'll do a little pop quiz on this one. So inclusionary housing is one of these four things, or is it? Housing designed for multiple generations? Housing inclusive of varied income groups? Housing that must be included in any new development? Or none of the above? So how many people say A? Okay? How many people say B? And four? How many people say C? Okay? And how many people said D? Okay. But I think if you, if you, it's actually B, C, and D together, a little trick question there, but, so, so inclusionary housing is actually a land-use code provision that requires new development to include a certain amount of capital A, capital H, affordable housing. That's, notice a lot of you taking pictures of this, you're welcome to do that, but we'll also put this deck up on the city's website, so you'll have access to this, so save, save your megabytes there. So the key idea here is that government has a very hard time delivering affordable housing. And so the idea was, can you get the private sector market, who's set up to be building stuff, to put a few affordable units in each of their projects? And so the idea is you use the market to deliver deed-restricted housing. In some jurisdictions, and depending on project sizes, it can be fulfilled with a payment in lieu of, PLO, PLO. So you pay a fee, rather than build the housing. But you can also build the units. And I think what we've seen in a lot of places where fees are collected, and we, you know, we went through this back and forth in Healdsburg a lot, it's great to collect fees, because you can leverage that with tax credits and other things, and actually get more bang for your buck. But most governments are not set up to take the risks of being a developer, so it's actually better to have somebody build it. But the conundrum, and I'll talk a little bit, the conundrum is the market-rate buyers are actually subsidizing the affordable unit. So as you climb up in the percentage or the number you require, you're actually increasing the price per market-based house. And some people may say, that's fine. Again, that's a community kind of conversation, but let's talk a little bit about this. So the inclusionary housing conundrum is, if the requirement is too low, it is typically expressed as a percentage of homes. So somewhere, anywhere from 10, for the people that have it, 10 to 30%. So if I build 10 units, I have to build one affordable unit, or if it's 30%, I have to build three units. So if you set that number too low, you're not meeting the community need, and you may not, or if you're taking it in fee, you're not securing adequate funding to build new units, because you may, what's it cost, but what's it cost to build an affordable housing unit right now? How many people, who would hazard to guess? What's that? How many? 250, okay, here, 250,000. Okay, anybody else want to take a guess?
4.
450. 450's the number I saw the other day. And I just saw, I have a friend who's an architect who does a lot of this stuff, she said she just delivered her first million-dollar affordable housing unit in San Francisco, that's what it costs to build per unit. So, the cost, so when you have these conversations, so if you say, okay, how much fee is a pro-rata, an appropriate pro-rata for that, for that unit? So that's one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is, if you set that number too high, you now increase the gap between the market and affordable units. So instead of helping the problem, you actually make it worse. So instead of market-rate housing that's selling for a million, and affordable housing that's selling for 300,000, you now take the market up to a million-two in order to get that 300,000. So now you've created a bigger gap, and you start chasing your tail. So there's a, there's a Goldilocks scenario there, that's a lot of math, and trying to figure it out, I don't know that anybody has figured it out completely, but there does seem to be a sweet spot between percentage and cost that allows the market to help out there. The other side of that is, as you push up that percentage, you begin to get, you have to get those market-rate units to a point that they, so now the units that were going to sell for a million, are now a million-two, or a million-three, the market may not accept those. So you have a project that no longer works, cannot get financing, and as we saw in Santa Fe, where Santa Fe County raised their inclusionary rate to 30%, they shut the market down. Nothing was built for probably a decade, because they could not get financing or get projects that actually worked. So it's a fine, you know, it's a fine tuning that has to be done, and we're wrestling with this right now. We're at 15% in Healdsburg, you're at 20%? We're talking about raising it to 20. I know the city of San Francisco did a lot of detailed studies, they were 12 to 17 seemed to be the tipping point where it worked or didn't work. So it's something, again, that as a community, you need to sort through and think about. Yes, sir?
Still waiting on orders?
There are cities that, if a builder builds an apartment complex next to the subdivision, and that meets their requirement to help with the affordable housing needs, so is that something that is also looked at? Because they can, in theory, build an apartment building for a lot less than a house, and a bunch of smaller houses.
Right. And if it's rental, it meets those low and very low. So there's a lot of different things, and there's a lot of trigger points. So is it like-for-like? In Healdsburg, we have a like-for-like. If you build a million-dollar house, your affordable unit has to look exactly like it, it has to be the same size and everything else. They've just started to believe the interior finishes, but that's a pretty big burden. So you can't do attached housing next to single-family detached, and make that your affordable. You can do it off-site, and you might be able to do it with some different products, but there's, so there's a lot of different tools, and again, as a community, and hopefully some of the things we'll do in our future workshops, is talk about what's both going to meet the need, and provide some solutions, but also respond to the values and the things that are important to you as a community. So, okay, let's move on to ADU. I'm sure everybody's, how many people, everybody's heard this term, haven't you? Because it's been like the darling term in the last year from the state and everything else. So accessory dwelling unit, it's basically a residential living unit that's accessory to a primary residence. And I don't know how many people read the McKinsey report, it was about two years ago, where they basically said, we could solve a big part of California's housing crisis if 350,000 people just built an ADU in their backyard, kind of thing. So, and it sounded great, I mean, it makes total sense. I think everybody's shocked at how hard it's been to get any built, and it's because you're asking people who are not developers or builders to basically develop and build real estate. So the financing's not there, the know-how hasn't been there, and the places that have done a lot of analysis about why it's not catching the momentum that they'd hoped, it's because of a lack of individual know-how, not a lack of will and interest. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that have happened in the state. So whether it's attached or detached determines the size of how big you can build. Here in Sonoma, you have to have a kitchen, because it's a dwelling unit, and you have to follow certain land-use restrictions for setbacks and heights. Now, last year, last year or two years ago, was it fall of seven, fall of 18? Fall of 17? SB 65, was it the, yeah. Fall of 17, the state government got very, very aggressive about ADUs, and made a lot of legislative kind of mandates, and they basically said, you no longer need to require parking. Because what was happening was, a lot of communities, and a lot of people wanted to build these in the communities, but for policy reasons or political reasons, they were being stonewalled. They said, well, you don't have enough parking for it, or you can't meet the setbacks, or have to do design review, and it's going to take all this, it's going to cost a lot. In Healdsburg, we used to charge $22,000 a unit for impact fees. So they said, you can't, you no longer can require parking, you have to provide relief in the second-story setback, so if you've got a five-foot setback, you can continue that all the way up to the second story. The impact fees must be calibrated to impact, so our impact fees went from $22,000 per unit to about $7,500, because they basically said, and the argument that a lot of the ADU proponents were saying, I'm building an accessory dwelling unit, what's the difference than if I put another bedroom on the house? I mean, it's, it's 500 square feet, how big's the second bedroom? And so they said, well, really, you're right, it's a bedroom, and it's a bathroom, you could be adding that to the house, we wouldn't charge you that. The only difference is you're adding a kitchen. So they figured out, what was the impact to the city infrastructure of the kitchen, and that became what the fee was. And then they limited the amount of design review that you can go through. So you can't really, you can't be held up forever, you know, tweaking the gables on the corners and stuff like that. So, another term that people didn't seem to know was discretionary approval. So there's two kinds of approvals if you're a developer. There's this really obtuse term that sounds very draconian, ministerial approval, which basically means, you've got somebody who's got a code book, it's a building code, it's a ministerial approval. As long as you follow the rules, the guy behind the counter has to approve it. It's, there's no subjectivity, how many people have been through a building inspection? No, no subjectivity, right? But anyways, generally speaking, no subjectivity, it's kind of, after you do all your homework, and you do everything by the book, you should get approved. Discretionary approval is just that, it's discretionary, it's subjective, and it's for a lot of the things that really matter at the early stages of a project. So conditional use permits, design review, rezoning, general plan amendments, the things that really kick, start a project, those are discretionary approvals, typically takes you into SEQA, unless you can get an infill exemption. It is, for people in the finance world, for people in the investment world, for people in the development world, it is the highest-risk part of the, of the process. If you talk to any builder or developer, what do they worry about? What keeps them up at night? It's not about material costs are going up, or I can't find labor, or I can't, you know, I can't, I'm not sure where the market's going. It's, are there going to be enough lots for me to build on? Because in California, it is increasingly hard to be able to get anything approved that actually would ultimately result in, in units. And so, and that's because, you start this process, you buy the land, you option the land, you start all the consultants, they're charging, the lawyers are charging a lot of money, stuff like that, get unanticipated delays, conditions of approval that you hadn't of money, stuff like that, get unanticipated delays, conditions of approval that you hadn't expected that add a lot of costs, and then you've got a long legal cost, and you may ultimately not even get approved. So that's a very, very risky thing. When we talk about what goes into the cost of housing, there's a, this is a very simplified list, but I think it's a good way to break it down. You have the land cost, got to buy the site. You have the entitlement cost, which is that approvals and the SEQA and all that kind of stuff. You have the infrastructure, the sewer, the water, the roads that you've got to bring to it. Then you have the materials, that actually the sticks and bricks, as we call it, that goes into the building. The labor, guys building it. And then there's the cost of capital, which is both profit and what investors seek for return. This piece right here, which is related largely to discretionary approvals, can be in a high barrier to entry market, about 30 percent, they can be looking for 30 percent return because it's so risky. In other markets, in fact, Kathy was asking me, like, give me an idea. So if I'm in Texas, this piece right here is probably about 20 percent of my total cost of house. If I'm here in California, it's probably more like 50, 60. And a lot of that, if a community is concerned about the cost of their housing, they should spend time focusing on their approval process because that's one of the few things you can control. You can't control material costs, you can't control labor costs, you can't control land costs, it's a little bit with some policies you might be able to. But the entitlement process and how, doesn't mean you have to compromise on quality, but what you ask developers, certainty, the clarity. One of my friends who I do a lot of work with, Ed McMahon, who's the Senior Fellow for Sustainable Development at the Urban Land Institute, he has a great face, is like, developers and communities want the same thing. They want certainty. Communities want to know what's going to be protected forever, what's open space, what stuff can look like. And developers want to know they can get, what's it going to take to get a project approved? Just tell me what I need to do, and I'll get it approved. So both sides want certainty. It's just how do we get that and find that, you know, the middle shot? So in terms of cost, it's a big item that actually communities can have an impact on. All right, density bonus. So this is, again, another land use provision, a code provision, that allows additional units to be put onto a site if you exceed the minimum, and it could be the code minimum. And it's typically used in the context of affordable housing. There are other density bonuses in downtowns and things like that, but for purposes of our conversation, it's about affordable housing. So if you have an inclusionary housing ordinance and it requires somebody to build 10 percent affordable housing, and they actually build 15 percent, then there are, then there are things that they can do, or they can get additional units over and above what the base density is. More importantly, they can get some additional concessions. So you might get some relief on parking, you might get some relief on some design requirements. So it's a way to, kind of a quid pro quo. You give us more affordable housing, we'll help you get more units. Again, back to that idea, now you have more market rate units to pay for those affordable housing, and we'll start to look at some of the things. If you're doing more units and you're building them smaller, do you need to meet the same parking requirement as somebody who's building, you know, larger units? We've got this conundrum in Healdsburg where a 5,000-square-foot housing, house has the same parking requirement as a 500-square-foot studio. Well, that makes no sense at all, and yet it's a big cost, and a much, the parking, relative parking cost per square foot of the 500-square-foot house is, you know, a lot more, is a lot more in terms of dollars. Okay, last couple of things, growth management ordinance. I know this is a big issue that's on, on everybody's radar here, just to make a distinction because this does have, it does have an impact on housing because there are two, there are two main tools. The growth, urban growth boundary, which again is a, is a hot issue, and the growth management ordinance. So the growth management ordinance really regulates the pace of growth. Sonoma currently has one at 65 units per year. You've dropped that down, you started at 100, dropped it to 80, and now you're at 65 per year. And it exempts affordable housing, capital A, capital H, and ADUs, and that's by state code. The urban growth boundary regulates geography of development. So one is talking about pace, the other is geography, and there's a number of quotes there from the general plan about the intent of the urban growth boundary. I think Sonoma County were blessed with a lot of, you know, great community separators and things that really define the uniqueness of each of our communities and has really in many ways helped protect, protect us from sprawl. But as David said at the beginning, it's, it's, you know, there's a, there's a tension that goes on. We don't want sprawl, but then that means we have to be more compact and thoughtful about how we use the land that we've got in our urban areas, in our developed areas. So there's an increasing amount of density. Okay, we are at the recap for the first part. So the first step is really understanding and localizing all the terms, and again, this will be available for you, we'll continue. We actually did a glossary in Healdsburg, I think it would be a great tool to do similar thing here, and as we go through this series over the next two months, this will be available and hopefully continue to get refined to something that means something to all of you. AMI is the keystone for how we talk about affordability and managing it. There are land use and legislative tools for accelerating production, but approvals are still a key, you know, a big barrier, and I think that's the thing that, and that's, we'll talk a little bit later, the state is getting very, very focused, and David made a mention of Huntington Beach. If you're not delivering on what you're supposed to be delivering, they're going to start taking a much bigger role in intervening in what's happening at the local level. And then compact higher-density development can address concerns over sprawl while creating more affordable by design solutions. So I'm going to stop there. Yeah, okay. Yeah, just David was reminding me, so this is available on the website. There is a part two, so don't run off, but I did want to take a breather and see if there's any other questions. We took a lot along the way, so hopefully that covered a lot of stuff, but let's take 10 minutes, and if you want to grab a cookie or something, we could do that as well. Yes, sir?
The projects don't pencil out for the developer, but we can't see what it is that's not penciling out, so there's no criteria there for us to know if it is or isn't. Is that what their profit rate is, is penciling out?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really complex equation, and it's interesting, when I go to other places in the country, people are shocked at the profit margins people are willing to endure in California compared to other places. So very, very broad rule, kind of rules of thumb, if you will, and, and these are not like precise numbers from some accounting firm, but they're generalized industry kinds of things, that what I was talking about, very expensive capital. If somebody's doing a project from scratch and they have to go through a long entitlement process, they're probably looking for 30 percent return on their land investment. Now, once they get it approved and they start building, they might recapitalize and then they reduce it, and the builder, construction piece of it would require a lower return. Housing developments probably look for somewhere between a 15 to 20 percent, what's called return on costs. So you take the total cost of the project and multiply it by 1.2, and that's really what's kind of the gross revenue needs to be, so 20 percent. And at that point, that's, I mean, I'm in a project right now that I'm doing, the bank won't even talk to us or lend us money unless we can show market support, cost support, and a completion guarantee that we can deliver it and basically what is about a 15 percent return on cost. So those are kind of two key metrics. That does travel back then to the project. And I know there's a lot of people that think, I, I have this, this joke, I talk about the myth of the hidden $5 million. Like, a lot of people think, a lot of people feel like there's always an extra $5 million hidden in a project that's, they're not being told about, and it's their job to squeeze it out of the project. It's rarely the case, and as I said, I'm really surprised at how low the margins are in most stuff in California. The thing that has probably saved a lot of developers is just the rising prices have kind of, you know, kept up with the rising costs and allowed them to make a reasonable living. So, and I'm not here to basically, what do I say, shill for the development community, but as somebody who has been on both sides, the complexity between the government regulations, the banking regulations, the cost of marketing, and the risks that are undertaken, there is, you know, there's a reasonable return required. Now, if the government is getting involved, where they're putting the land in at risk, they're providing some relief on approvals, they're helping to accelerate things, that reduces that risk and thereby the return expectations could be lower. So in San Francisco, they've created some funding where the city is actually a partner on the pre-development risk for affordable housing projects, and then the developer takes it from there. So there's new, there's a lot of conventions there, you have to understand the risk-reward thing.
It seems like it's so risky and so time-consuming and so...
It's all, I didn't know that.
It's so risky and time-consuming and not much, not much return for investors. And in communities that are so super emotional and sensitive about such things as Sonoma is, why doesn't the city find the land, tell the, tell the developers what they need, tell them they've got the approvals, and the people bid on it? Why take, why not take the risk out and the uncertainty and welcome developers?
Yeah. So it's a great question. I think, observationally, opinion, cities are not set up to take those kind of risks, but there are some processes, again, city of San Francisco, which I think has done some pretty good things. They've gone into some areas, and they haven't even bought the land, but they've done the entire planning approvals and SEQA to prepare the sites. So when a developer came in, they knew exactly what they could build. There was no community process because it had already been approved and worked out. And then the developer bought the sites and paid back for part of that process. So essentially, the cities took all the pre-development risk and then clawed it back at the end, and if they had the funds to do that. The other thing is, I think if a city is doing that, or more importantly, a nonprofit, we're seeing this a lot more, where NGOs and nonprofits are doing this because they're, they're more credible in some ways than the developer. I mean, your question about we never get to see the numbers, an NGO might take that whole process, identify what the, you know, the reasonable, you know, returns are and all that kind of stuff, and there's a credibility that kind of fills that gap. So that's another, but that is a, that's a really good tool, if you can do it.
And one thing that I would say as well is the city, we are starting to have those conversations. Rachel and I are part of the Housing Town Hall Subcommittee, and so we're discussing potentially looking at TO2 as a revenue source to grab funding for maybe purchasing land. We're still talking about that.
So maybe just one other thing. The city used to have, we used to have a redevelopment agency. Cities throughout California had them. This city in 2010, it was, the redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2011. In 2010, we had $5.5 million that came through the redevelopment agency to the city. 1.1 of that was for affordable housing, and 4.4 million of that was really for projects, which city used a lot for street maintenance, capital improvements, redoing the library. That was really our capital improvement budget. The governor took and demolished redevelopment agencies in 2011. We don't have that funding source anymore. So the small town used to have over $1 million a year to put to our affordable housing. That's how the city, basically, the Altamira project on Broadway, the city bought that property. The city put two, I think, $200,000 in to help do some pre-construction loans to help that nonprofit affordable developer start that project. And then the city also, we sold bonds in 2011, and there's $1.4 million that is also going into that project to help subsidize that affordable housing project. That's a little over 40 units of low affordable housing that is now through the entitlement process, took a number of years, but hopefully they're trying to get their tax increment funding this month, so then they can hopefully move forward with that project. But we don't have those monies anymore, and we will not have them again. So they're, we're looking for some smaller sources, but we are, cities are in a different world. One of our major financing tools that we used to use to support and sponsor affordable housing is gone. So that's just part of the reality of where we are.
It was financing and execution. I mean, it gave you a lot of ability. I've kind of forgotten, it's been so long ago that we lost that now that we kind of forgot it was a, let's take one more, and then if you don't mind, we'll kind of go through the rest of it, because I want to respect people's time, make sure you can get out of here.
How do we get people qualified to buy these, and is there going to be any down payment assistance? I know some municipalities are doing bond measures where they're using that, and then there's down payment assistance, it's a joint or shared equity. So then when the, you know, house sells, the money goes back into the pot as it's grown with the, you know, value of the house. So are those, I know that a bond measure obviously would need to happen and to get funding for something like that. Is that something that the city is looking at for the longer term? I know that Alameda County just did one, and they're now, they just rolled out something where they could do up to $150,000, most of them will be $100,000 or less, shared equity, down payment assistance. So is there anything like that? Because that would probably be more meaningful for the borrowers in conjunction with the housing prices being, you know, stabilized as well, because there's going to be that gap where we hit that loan limit, you know? So I always think that may be something we should, you know, look at as a city because there, you know, that, that could help a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that the Housing Subcommittee is looking at is the establishment of a housing trust fund, which we don't have at the moment. And that would be one of the many different types of things that the pooling of our funds can go towards providing first-time buyer assistance and such. There is just one other comment I wanted to make, and that was regarding the, the processing of permits being very risky. Jim mentioned that entrepreneurs do not want to see a lot of questionable things or things that they can't complete in their portfolio and their, what's the word I'm looking for when they do the pro forma? The discretionary world is the world that I live in and the planets live in. We try to take that gray and make it as much as black and white as we can. The state of California has taken steps with the passage of SB 35. Some of you may have heard about the over half, a dozen and a half measures that were incorporated, adopted by the legislature. They're actually coming up with a process now where ADUs, they're going to pre-design and do all of the architecture and stuff that are pre-approved plans that agencies must approve and allow or take away that discretion, that gray area, so that developers can have an idea of the costs, the materials, and such. There's a bill going through the legislature right now that takes away all discretion that Jim talked about from allowing affordable housing on certain sizes of properties. And they also want to force a certain type of design on it as well, taking away discretion from the local agency. So this is part of that rub that we alluded to earlier.
Okay, let's, let's jump to the second part here. Thanks for hanging in here. This will be, I think, a little shorter and hopefully less dense. So we're talking, so again, you've gotten the vocabulary, you've gotten some of the terms, we're going to put those to work on a couple of, a couple of examples and some data that we've been able to compile for here in Sonoma. Now, a little bit of a preamble or pretext here, one of the things, again, that we learned from Healdsburg is it takes years of kind of defining what do you want to measure, what's important to you as a community, and getting the data. This is not, unfortunately, one of those things where you can just go and Google it. There's a lot of stuff where you're continually refining and checking the data. So what we'll present or share with you tonight is data that we put together with David and his team's help, some stuff that we were able to find on the web, some reports, but this is an, this is an evolving deck of information that I would encourage you to think about, again, what means a lot to you and how do you want to continue measuring it? And in our case, this was the, some of these were the basis by which we set our goals and then measure our progress on a regular basis. So, so there's, for stuff that we could get, I would say that there's ways to measure the state of housing, and, and this is really important. Anybody that's in business or wants to get something done, everybody know what KPIs are? Key Performance Indicators? So you need something, I mean, we can sit around, we can talk about policies and all these kind of great things, but we need to know if we're making progress or not, because if you're not making progress, then it, you just don't, you're constantly feeling bad. So we went about trying to figure out, first of all, what was the real problem? How could we measure improvements? And then what would be the indicators that we could use? Call it a report card, call it a yardstick, whatever. But the idea is to come up with some things where the data's readily available. And so based on some things that I know from the industry, some data we were able to cobble together, here are, you know, five things that at least give you a snapshot of the state of housing in Sonoma. And the first one is housing mix. So I always start with, like, how many housing units do you actually have in Sonoma? Well, you've got, based on what we could find, 2010 census plus everything that's been built since then, 5,752. Eerily very similar in size to what we've got in Healdsburg. There's a lot of compatibility or comparability between the two, but one of the things that you've done very well that we have not done is you have a very high portion of your portfolio that is in multifamily. So multifamily can be rental, multifamily can be for sale. So a lot of people confuse multifamily and think it's apartments. Multifamily is the way the housing is organized, basically stacked flats, but it allows you to basically build in many ways, you can deliver things more cost-effectively. A good balanced community, you know, before the 80s and before the run-up of a lot of single-family homes, 60 percent was single-family, 40 percent was multifamily. That was kind of a standard, if you look at a lot of the data. And then we got on this thing where everybody wanted a single-family home. Now we're moving back to a lot of the bigger projects I work in. Our mix is typically 60, 40, 50, 50, because that's how we can address not only economy for housing, but also lifestyle. Because what we're finding is there's a lot of people that want multifamily housing, and they'll pay more for that than they will for single-family because they want a lock-and-leave lifestyle. They want to be able to lock it up and leave. They want to know their neighbors, they don't want all the maintenance, all those kinds of things. So multifamily is no longer just for those that can't afford single-family, it is clearly a driver, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But anyway, so you have a very high percentage of that, that's a good thing. Mobile homes, single-family attached, which is different than single-family detached, which are the homes that most everybody knows with the white picket fence and on its own lot. Attached is typically a duet, paired home, duplex, things like that. Now, the second thing that we looked at and spent a lot of time talking about, and this is a really important when we talk about greenhouse gas and sustainability and local economic ecosystems and all those kind of cool buzzword terms, is what percentage of your residents actually live in town and work in town? And this is a really, this has to do a lot with transportation. But it's like, can a lot of your people that live here, do you have, first of all, do you have the jobs base? Secondly, can people afford to live here? And C, do they choose to live here? So you can see from 2002, and this is a really great kind of fun tool to play with if you want, called On the Map. It's from the census, put in the town, you can pick a year. But anyways, this shows from 2002 to 2015, you've actually had a decline in the number of people who live in town and work in town. So, and this was a big thing for us. We were at about 33%. And one of our key policy goals in thinking about how we focus housing was we wanted to get it to 40%, which is a pretty high number. Other places I'm working right now, Rona Park's at about 19%. I forget what Santa Rosa is, but some of the other communities. So. But it's a good indicator, and it's a good way to talk about the importance of quality of life, local economy, all those kinds of things. The other way to look at that is, oh, I deleted that. Okay. Another one, and we didn't have this data, we couldn't get this complete. But what percentage of people that work in key community services, hospital, schools, city, actually live in town? And it's a good way to metric. And the short story on that is I did a, this advisory panel where we spent a week pro bono, and this was up in northern Colorado after a really big flood. And one of the interesting stories there was after the big flood, Estes Park, which is this great little resort town up in the mountains, they lost their only transportation route into town. And they had to helicopter their entire hospital staff in every, every day. Cost the town $700,000 in the first month and a half. So the idea of why is it important, and some people will say, well, you know, they can live in the next town over, or why do we have to have people living and working in town? There's a whole kind of benefit that comes not only from the cost of operations. We had this in Healdsburg after a big flood. We couldn't, a lot of the people, public works people couldn't get in to deal with it. So there's a, there's a tangible benefit, and then there's a psychological benefit if the people feel engaged and connected to the community where they work. So. Another one is affordable housing as a percentage of housing stock. So we talked about affordable. This is capital A, capital H, deed restricted, et cetera, et cetera. What percentage is your total mix? So we were about 96% market, 4% affordable. When you look on an absolute basis, these are some of, maybe some of peer communities around. Healdsburg, we just, with two recent projects we just got approved, we're at about 485, Spasibo 402. But the good news for Sonoma is you've got some things in the work that will actually move you up that ladder by quite a bit. You're going to be adding quite a few units, and it'll jump you up. But it'll increase your affordable housing stock by almost 36%. So you have to kind of celebrate the wins that you're making and the progress you're making. And it's never quite enough, but it, you need to take stock in what actually has been accomplished and all the hard work that's gone into getting to this point. Another way to look at it is are you keeping up? And so what are you actually building on a, you know, annual, obviously, real estate is a cyclical business, so you can't look at any given year. But on a trend basis, how are you doing? So you've built since 2004 to 2018, based on the data we were able to get, final permitted units, 505 units. It comes out to 28 units per year, and you can see that dash line is your growth GMO annual limit. So you're not even building to your growth management ordinance limit. And the way to backcheck this then is how many jobs are you creating on an annual basis? And if you figure maybe two persons per household, are you even keeping up with the jobs you're creating? So we are at, our actual GMO is 30 units per year. We were building about 20 units per year, and we were creating 80 jobs per year for about a seven-year run. So we were not even keeping, not only did we have a shortage of being able to house the people who were already working in town, we weren't even able, we were creating a net deficit as we went each year. So there's some tools and metrics there that's readily available data that you can continue to monitor and look at as a part of your report card and how you drive policy and action. And then we just talked about ADUs. I put this up here too. So you're making progress in ADUs. If you look at that, that's like, what, a 300% increase over a couple of years? Sounds impressive. Those small wins, got to count, count those, celebrate those. But you can see that, you know, for all the opportunity and all the emphasis that people have placed on ADUs, the uptake has been very, very slow. And so there's a lot of work that has to be done there. But you're at least making progress. Like many of the communities, you are increasing the number. And then the really, so I promised I wouldn't make this one as dense. This is the really obtuse, dense part of housing as it relates to the public sector and government and state of California. And there's this term called RENA. It's not a person. It's the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And it's the state gets together and they actually tell how many, how many homes each community needs to build. They figure out, they project, how many houses do we need, you know, into the future? And then they said, Sonoma, you have to build so many. Healdsburg, you have to build so many. And, and, you know, it's a bit of a rub for some places. It's like, well, why is the state telling us what we have to build and not build? And so for years, this has gone on. Given the pressures that we're seeing, and David talked about some of the legislative changes, it's because a number of communities have not been meeting their goals. And it used to be, okay, you know, do better next time. Now it's getting really serious. And they're really, the state's getting very, very serious about what happens, and Huntington Beach is one of those. They're not meeting their goals. They haven't met their goals for years. And they just downzoned a site that should have actually had, held a lot of housing. So it's designated by the state, and then it's encoded in your housing element update. So everybody knows the general plan, major policy tool, kind of called the blueprint for growth of any community. Housing element is one of the seven key sections in that you talk a lot about what your RENA goals are and how you're going to support those RENA goals. And I'll tell you in a minute what that is. It focuses on the ability to provide affordable housing. So there is no mechanism that basically forces you to deliver the affordable housing. It just says you have to provide the capacity, which is largely determined by having enough land zoned for higher density, which would actually then, in theory, support affordable housing. And it's an importantly, increasingly important benchmark that the state is using for interventions in land use issues. So here's the math. So for your current housing element, 2015 to 2023, the state has said you need to build 137 housing units. So that's an eight-year period. So over eight years, you need to build 137. 74 of those need to be affordable, capital A, capital H, deed restricted, affordable housing. And 63 of those can be market. So, and affordable includes all of those categories I showed you from very, extremely low all the way up to moderate. It doesn't include middle, missing middle. So here's where you are in terms of permits issued, and the state looks at permits issued, assuming that those will actually get built, not units that are final. So in the period since the housing element was adopted to where we are last year, you've issued permits for 18 affordable and 28 market. So you're not there, but we've got a few years left in the cycle. But the good news is you've got quite a bit that actually has been entitled and is likely to lead to permits. So if you take, follow that all the way through, you've got entitled, 84 in the affordable category, 73 in the market. When you combine those all together, you actually have a surplus and exceed RENA by 2023 by a pretty good percentage. So again, big win. Celebrate this. This is good stuff. Can't give up, but it's really important. Yes, sir? Yes, you do. Yeah, we just thought that would be way too much information for the first time together. But we're happy to share that, and it's actually, I think, in a backup slide if we, if we go there. Okay, so we're getting near the end here. I just wanted to share, maybe leave on a little bit of an aspirational note and a little bit of contextual notes about some trends and some emerging solutions, primarily in terms of product types. So, and this will set the stage then for our next workshop, which is May 16th, which, as Kathy said, is the moderated panel with people who are actually building and developing housing. So not theory, not philosophy, actual, you know, practical tools. But I talk a little bit about, so I've spent a lot of time in the last probably decade really focusing in on the issue of demographics. Everybody knows demographics, right? But more importantly, psychographics. How many people know about psychographics? Okay, so what, so remember, tell me what psycho, what are psychographics?
What kind of magazines they read, what they mustn't see your phone.
Right. So it's really about what are the values that drive you to make the decisions that you make? And one of the ways the guys have explained this to me is think of somebody, I don't know how, he's probably older now, but two, two white males, probably 70 years old now, major CEOs, major, ran, like, had significant leadership positions. And George Bush and Bill Clinton, very similar demographics, age, race, positions, careers, et cetera, et cetera. Psychographics very differently, if you just think about how they executed in their position. So the idea of psychographics is very much value-based. And as we look at what drives housing formation, housing decisions, housing choices, psychographics has an increasingly big play. So it's not only about age, but it's what's important to you. There are some things, as we look at demographically, and this is very, you know, very generalized. But one of the important things to know is baby boomers and Gen Y, which are kind of the, are the two big dumbbells. So out of 300 million-plus people in the US, half of those are fall, a half, a quarter of those are boomers. A quarter of those are millennials, but they both want similar things. They want to have walkable, a little more urban, smaller kind of, at different stages of life, but they're looking for similar things. Gen Xers, interestingly, are very, very much like their parents. They're turning out very, they like the suburbs, they like, want their own house, they want single cars, single-family cars, that stuff like that. And then the, what's called the war babies, or the silent, or the greatest generation, very much focusing on health services and walking. But this is important, because you've got these two cohorts that are looking for different kinds of housing and, but in some ways, looking for similar things, and something that we have not really been building. And I'll talk about that in a minute. The other thing that's very interesting, this was a study that was done in 2013 about what are people looking for, where do you want to live? And the only place that actually had a growth was a significant growth in terms of where people are currently and where they would like to live, is the small town and the rural areas. So that box up there, which, you know, Sonoma, Healdsburg, a lot of Sonoma County falls into. So people thinking about where they are on life stage, if they had a choice of where they want to go. Obviously, we've heard a lot about the urban renaissance, but with, I believe that will run its course. It will, you know, it will reach a point where it will stabilize, but a lot of those people will want to move to places like Sonoma. So there's a lot of growth coming towards these places, and how we deal with it is important. The other thing is what are people looking for in terms of development? And really interesting in terms of this split, you know, people want a shorter commute. They'll trade a shorter commute for a smaller home. So the idea that, you know, well, I want more square footage, I'll drive farther. It's no, I'm happy with a smaller home as long as I can walk to work. I'm close to the shops. I want to live in a community where there's a mix of incomes and a mix of people as opposed to everybody being like me. I want to be near mobility options, public transportation as well as other things. A lot of things are there. And also a mix of homes. So we've reached a point where about half the population, again, this is national, want similar, they want opposite things. If you've done this probably 20 years ago, those bars would have been very, very different. Now, I'll skip over that one. This is a really important one, because basically what this shows you is what we've been building and what the demand is. So if you look at this, so we've, so supply in 2010 was this blue bar here for multifamily. Here's what the demand is by 2035. So this is the change. This is how much needs to be added. Same thing for townhouses, small lots. The only one that is probably in a surplus state is the conventional, conventional lot development. So when we think and we talk about how do we solve housing solutions, what we're saying is what we knew of as the models are probably not the solutions going forward, both from a cost standpoint, but they are also not what the market, a big part of the market is looking for. So we need to be thinking differently about our, our product solutions. So some of the solutions that are out there that are merging, and again, we talked about this earlier, but I love this cartoon. So there's, again, my friend Eddie McMahon likes to say, there's two things that Americans hate, and that's sprawl and density. So if you think about that for a second, you know, it's like, okay, how do you solve both of those? So, so, and what I argue with a lot of people is there is density, which is what everybody's been turned off, and they subject, and they just basically reduce it to a number. Oh my God, 25 units per acre is like way too high for a small town like ours. Versus thinking about what I like to call density with amenity. It's not about the number. It's how do you organize the public spaces, the public realm, the architecture? So it's about high-quality density. Another friend of mine is an architect. He loves to call it friendly proximity instead of density, because the density is such a, you know, so it's, you're knowing your neighbors, you're part of the community. But, you know, this is, these are 23-foot lots. This is Hercules. Anybody been to Hercules Town Center? I mean, great project, public builder, you know, town-initiated, really well done. And these are very, very narrow lots, but it's got a great sense, and this is a big wetlands that they restored right in front of it. There's another term. We talked about the missing middle in terms of income. There's another term, this is a friend of mine, Dan Perolak, with Optico Design, really, he has this great website called missingmiddle.com. If you haven't followed this, look at this. But this is a great graphic. And basically what Dan has said, and a lot of people are saying, is the missing middle are all these cool kinds of housing products that we used to have in all the neighborhoods and towns that we love that we can no longer build. We've gotten really good, and the market's gotten good, and the approvals have gotten good, and the financing's gotten good at building single-family detached and mid-rise apartments. So you go down to any kind of emerging downtown and you see the seven-story, you know, ground floor, concrete podium with retail and four stories of apartments above it. But all of that stuff in the middle, we've lost the art, because it's hard to finance, it's hard to get approved. The land regulations don't support them, coverage. I'm living this, living that right now. And yet that in many ways is a solution for getting housing into communities that's actually in keeping with the character and the grain of those communities without getting to something that's maybe on the far right, that's not, maybe doesn't feel like the town. It's one of the things I hear a lot as I travel around, is we don't want to lose our town character. We don't lose our small town. So what defines small town? And in many ways, I think it's about the grain. And this also, these smaller types of housing provide all of those people that want something different, a different lifestyle option, a different housing choice, different place to, a more economical way to live and, and, you know, a different way to live and know their neighbors. So some of those products, this is probably, everybody's familiar with this kind of product. This is a great solution. This was like the one that everybody wanted in Healdsburg, but it's a cottage court. So it's a smaller home around a shared green space. So you take all of that land that would be in everybody's backyard, and you aggregate it into the center. And the neighbors know each other. It's very much about a front porch living, and the garages are tucked around the back. And, and it creates this, you know, very iconic imagery. But there's a quality of life and a community, what we call an intentional neighborhood that grows out of this, that is, is very, very productive. If you've been to any of these, Seattle, Portland have most of them. It's really, you know, really a successful lifestyle for, interestingly, both empty nesters, people that are moving down, but also people that are just starting. So it covers both spectrums of the generation. Cohousing. So somebody asked about cohousing. So cohousing in a lot of ways is not a different form of housing, it's a different form of delivery. So this is a project in Denver, Colorado, called High Plains, or High, Highland Gardens Village. Really, I think it's one of my favorite cohousing projects. And basically, 17 families got together. They wanted something more intentional about their lifestyle than what they were getting just by buying a home on a block. They got together, they went and found a builder, they designed the houses together. And the builder took it on because he had no market risk. He knew what he was going to sell them for. It was basically a fee development deal. It's all the same, and they're single-family homes. They're obviously attached, so they could be a little less. They cost less than market, because he wasn't getting any, he wasn't getting a risk profit. He was just getting his builder profit. And the only thing that it does have, it has a central community building that has a kitchen in it. And once a week, you can call, they get together for dinner. You don't have to. A lot of people think, oh, well, is cohousing one of those cult things, you know, where I got to eat with all my neighbors every night? No, it's not. It's just a way of, like I said, being more intentional. But it's a delivery mechanisms where you take a lot of the market risk and development risk out of it. The builder just becomes a fee builder. The people are buying in. They may be capitalizing it from the beginning, putting money in, so he doesn't have to go to the banks and all those kinds of things. So. Single-family attached, which, this is a project in Healdsburg, which is a, called The Grove. But these are, you know, these are units. They're actually, so it looks like one big house, but they're actually split down the middle. So they're, they're basically a duplex, what we would have called a duplex years ago, but you wouldn't call it that now, because it wouldn't market very well. So. The single-family attached, or we use terms like paired homes or duets or something like that. But it's just, again, you're, the homes are less expensive, because you've taken one of the finished walls out from the edges, and you're using the land more efficiently. In this case, they actually preserved a lot of the redwoods and built the homes around that. Smaller lots, again, just kind of great, this is a project up in Denver, again. Denver actually has some really great housing products, but this is a really important lesson. Very simple box. I mean, you look at that, that is basically a four-sided box. But the tension to detailing and the windows and the porch and the balustrades and all that is where all the money went. So the framing's very simple, and you see a lot of builders where there's all these gymnastics that they go through with the roof lines and the dormers and all that kind of stuff, because the city doesn't want it to be too boring, or they've told through the design review, they got to do all this stuff. And if you get the materials right, and you get the design right, you can actually build a cost-effective structure and really create, again, high-quality public realm is what matters. So these are the things, the trade-offs that need, and you have to understand, design, and be able to have that conversation intelligently. So paired homes, again, the idea of basically a duplex, but this is, again, is in Denver, this is in Stapleton. This is interesting, because you have one house that enters here from the courtyard. This is kind of, this is kind of the Spanish Mission or Mediterranean style. Here, the other one, there's a little side courtyard that the other one enters. So instead of the, the attached or duplexes that we see a lot, where it's just the same home elevation just flipped over and attached to the middle, this is turned, so everybody has a very clear identifiable entrance. There's a private little courtyard. There's four of these homes, so eight homes on a very efficient site. And it creates a very interesting lifestyle. And then townhouses, actually, I was driving around today, I saw this project, which I thought was really great. It's very interesting, the way it's masked up, and, again, the way it pays attention to the street. But townhomes typically have a lot of, you share, at least, you know, you share one, probably two walls. You have a second level to it, so it's an up-down kind of arrangement. And again, it's more efficient, because you're using the land very efficiently and parking behind. And then there's the classic, you know, residential over retail, very difficult to do. It's what every graduate school designer draws on every downtown, and very difficult to do. The banks don't want to finance it, because their basic thesis is if the retail fails, what do I do with that? I'm stuck with an empty retail building. The residential fails, how do I? So what, you know, romantically, we all would like to do, and people are figuring out how to do it. It's not as easy as we would all like. And, and as retail is being disrupted, it's less and less a viable ground floor use, except on a limited basis. So we use a thing, we use a term called active edges. So instead of always saying it has to be retail, it has to be active. So you put something in there, it could be a community use. It could be, you know, a lot of apartment buildings put some of their public spaces in there or something like that. So it's active, and you see in there. It's not a blank wall, but it's not. It's not a blank wall, but it's not always retail because there's only so much retail to go around. Okay, getting to the end here. So this is just a very simple, you know, it's not a complete list. But it's the idea that getting to housing solutions, there's a whole portfolio of tools and techniques. And if you think about it, there's a continuum that goes from more public intervention and higher level of public participation all the way to much more private-driven and private sector. So at the top, you've got sales taxes and special assessments and fee waivers and regulatory roof, inclusionary zoning. That's very much a public instrument that's driving the housing agenda and the outcomes. You get to the bottom, as a designer or developer, can I get four more units in? Be really creative, try some of these new products, maximize the site, maybe exceed the site? That's a design thing that's totally private market. Now, you'll need approvals, but employment versus income, soft seconds. I mean, those things can all be done in the private sector without a lot of public intervention. So not a complete list, not meant to be the only things, but it's an idea of how many different tools are out there and how we might use them. So then this, I just put this up, Kathy sent this, and this is actually really great. This is April 4th. So this is all, when we talked about the state getting very involved in housing and the challenges that we're feeling, this is all the different stuff in terms of legislation and acts that are being discussed, talked about that have an impact on everything from, as David was saying, removing certain review requirements, making certain kinds of development as of right, funding assistance, tenants' laws, all those kind of things. So this is, this will be on here and we can also just put this up on the website. I presume this whole link, it's a pretty interesting roadmap. And again, not all of these are going to come to pass immediately, but it's good to know the level of effort and where it's going on what subject areas. Okay, I was going to end, I talked a lot about Healdsburg. I'm sorry if you're tired of hearing about Healdsburg, but I learned a lot through that process and we're still very much a work in progress. But I do think there are some valuable lessons because there are so many similarities in terms of scale and some of the lifestyle and economy issues that we both share. Each town obviously has its own personality and set of values. But just as an example, so three years ago, we did this very similar process. In fact, some of these slides are from that same deck. And we did the housing education series, then we formed, we got together, we wrote this thing called the Housing Action Plan, which I was heavily involved in. And it was meant to be the business plan by which the policy documents would actually get, you know, implemented. So it was a very, we said by the end of our cycle, we're going to build 125 accessory dwelling units. We're going to build 40 middle, missing middle units. We're going to build, we're going to, 50% of our projects will be mixed product and creative density. And some of these, we were just kind of reaching out there for a benchmark, but at least gave us as a community a set of things that we could begin to look at how we were performing. Since that time, we've had, you know, we've continued to have housing prices, but there's been, we've passed TOT increase. So we're now raising about $300,000, $500,000 a year from our lodging taxes going to affordable housing. We passed a ballot measure that exempts missing middle rental housing from our growth management ordinance. So 50 units per year can get a free waiver or whatever to build rental. Because we haven't had, unlike you, we have very little rental housing. You guys have done pretty well on that, but we have not. So we wanted to incentivize that. And then recently, just kind of go full circle here. So there was a large 32-unit apartment complex that was Little A, Little H, affordable housing. It's where a lot of our workforce and people that worked in the, in the wine industry lived. It was older, it was tired, and therefore the rents were very low. Owners passed away, their heirs put it up for sale. The city's actually bought it now and will convert it to Capital A, Capital H housing. 2.3 million, what'd we say? It was $450,000 to build a unit. They're buying it for about $250,000 a door. It'll be managed by a nonprofit housing association. So that's, you know, all of these pieces now coming together in terms of tools and how all of that works. And still in, still in process, but, you know, really exciting thing and a way to, housing you can buy and convert is obviously much cheaper than trying to build new in this current climate. Okay, with that, a couple of things just threw up there we can talk about. Other people have questions, but, you know, I think the point of tonight was as we move into the next session, how proactive do you want to be as a community in shaping your strategy around housing? And one of the things we spent a lot of time talking about was not only housing affordability, but housing diversity. This idea that different product types, you know, just delivering more housing is good. Affordable housing is obviously great, but just having alternative products like some of those things I showed for people that are different stages in life could be a very important goal. What products out of the stuff I've showed you or you've seen elsewhere do you think are appropriate for this community or you would like to see or you think people are looking for? And then are there other best practices that you've seen in other communities that would be good to, you know, know more about, be able to share with the community? And as we get into our third part of this series, where we'll be sitting at round tables and we'll be doing game scenarios and stuff like that, those would be really great to know some of that in advance so we can talk a little bit more about those and bring those to the table. So with that, we are done. So, got some.
I apologize, it's quarter off. So we'll do 15 public comment, is that correct? Okay, so if people want to make public comment, there will be a time to do that. Let's try to pretend that it's a question given and then we'll have a little bit of time for public.
Yeah, and please wait for the microphone because we need it to be recorded so that people who watch it later can hear the questions, so.
If you do get up and leave, don't forget to do the exit survey. That's really, really helpful for us, so appreciate it.
Exit surveys located right on your chairs. We'll start with you.
Thank you for the presentation. A quick question. A lot of the focus of the presentation was on creation of housing. And you've done a lot of work in Colorado. I was just reading in the Vail Town Plan about a program they have called Indeed. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it or not, but it's essentially purchase of price restriction, deed restrictions with existing housing. And it was an interesting concept because they have a lot of workforce there in a resort community that has real trouble affording a place to live. So my question is, is there a dimension of the planning where you're looking at in sort of shifting potentially some of the housing supply that exists in order to address some of the other categories of two with things like an indeed or other ways of price restricting property?
The answer is yes. That's part of the component of a housing trust fund. That's one of the things you can do to rehab cities. Here in California that have been long down the path of housing trust funds do a lot of that. City of Santa Cruz is famous for it, does a lot of rehab and funding assistance, that kind of thing. So that's something that our city council and our housing subcommittee are tackling at the moment.
And I'll just say, the reason we're doing this is to gain information from the community about what they want to do, right? And so we're developing a housing trust fund. We're going to have a pool of money. The next question is what do we do with that money and how is it best served? And we don't know the answer to that yet. So we're trying to get as much information as possible so that then we can come forward with a plan that we think is going to work well for Sonoma. And so that's why we're learning from Jim and from our entire community. Rachel and I are working hard to hear all these ideas and see what best any funds that we have can be used for. We have to get an idea of how much funds we're going to have, how sustainable that is, all those kinds of questions. So it's going to be a variety of solutions for sure.
You know, using what we have or building new and things of that nature. You put some information up about the changes in how many people work here and live here over the years. And I was curious, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but I was curious if that took into consideration, again, with the lifestyle changes too, that maybe the home people, and that's why they don't live, work here? You know, they just come hang? Or also aging, like I retired and so, you know, that changed the number, but those factors.
And the short answer is, you know, this is, this is data that we get from the federal government. They do all the analysis. So I don't know, I mean, they're, they're using census data. I think if it's a second home, it's not the primary home, so that wouldn't be counted. But if you're retired, you would probably show up as somebody who's, well, not working and living here, so.
In terms of planning, the psychographics of who we are becoming as a community and going on the 20, what did the year go to, 2023? You know, as you're making these plans going to 2023, that's shifting. Those are shifting. So I was curious if those are considered even though you work off statistics that come from HUD?
Yeah, it does. And maybe just to clarify one thing is this is an education slash information process, three series like this. There is no plan being created right now or in process, I think. And again, we did a similar thing in Healdsburg. And then as we got to the end, we said, hey, we really need a plan. So part of this is to gather questions like that. Hey, we need to think about what we're going to be in 15 years. We need an X kind, do we need an action plan? Do you need some other kind of plan? So this is a chance for the community to help shape what are the tools and what are the questions that should be asked to get to more balanced housing outcome in, you know, and again, whatever timeframe you want to pick, so.
Hi, my question was very similar to hers and maybe, maybe it's the same, so maybe you don't need to say more. But I really liked that the indicator of how many people who work here can afford to live here. But like the lady over there, there are a lot of people who don't work, don't necessarily have income, artists, retired. Those are all important community members. So I think it'd be great to have indicators that reflect this desire for a whole community, you know? So maybe there's a way to build on that indicator in some way to capture those important people.
Yes, thank you. I thought it was a great presentation. One of your slides I thought was interesting was where going forward, the biggest, I guess, growth in sort of desire under the psychographics was everyone wants to move to small towns and rural areas. But if everyone does, they will cease to be small towns and rural areas. And so going forward, I think that's obviously something we need to consider. You know, considering our local economy is based on being a small town in rural area. And also, can you sort of add some thoughts about just sort of demand going forward? I mean, I've read some studies where in the next 10 to 20 years, obviously, there's going to be this major transfer from baby boomers that currently have homes to Gen X and millennials that don't have the kind of capital to buy homes, which may change the pricing of homes. And this is sort of why we're here, it's the affordability. Because we've talked about supply, but where do you see demand going?
Well, that's a, if I knew that question, I'd probably be a really wealthy guy. But, so I could give you some personal, just again, working on this for like 30 years, kind of assimilating a lot of data. And I think there's a couple of things that are going to happen. I think a lot of the millennials will seek out towns and they'll leave the urban centers and they'll move to places, you know, what Steve Case calls the rise of the rest, which are a lot of the second-tier cities that actually have kind of interesting fabric, but they're not as expensive as San Francisco or Seattle. And now people are, those people are looking, they're mobile enough and they've made, they can work anywhere. They want to live somewhere. But I think we're also seeing, we're seeing this that they do not want the homes their parents had. So you're right, I think there is going to be a glut of the larger homes that we maybe all grew up with and thought everybody wanted. And those are going to, those are going to drop in price and we're seeing that. There are places that used to be the go-to suburban neighborhoods that now stuff sits for a long time versus the fixer-uppers in a walkable neighborhood are actually premium pricing. And, you know, Sonoma, Healdsburg, a lot of these towns, I mean, they have a great kind of small urbanist form, which is where I think the market is going. So there will be, there will be a shift. Who will backfill that, I think is really the big question. And for a long time, it really was first-generation immigration. But with the changes that are going on politically, I'm not sure if we will have that stock. I mean, they were, they were coming into the country and they were excited to buy a big home or they had multi-generational families and it was a great backstop. But that's, that's not happening. So I think what people are looking for, we're not building enough of. And what we have a lot of is not necessarily what people are going to be looking for. So, and that's a very broad generalization, but I.
One factor I didn't see mentioned at all, and it has a very corrosive effect on available housing, is the effect of services like Airbnb, which, which despite all the housing you want to build, every Airbnb unit sucks, sucks one unit off the market. I didn't see any, I didn't see any mention of it in your presentations. And I think especially in a city like Sonoma with so much tourism, that's a very big factor that needs to be taken into effect.
I could, I can take this one or Kathy can as well. The city of Sonoma has put a moratorium in place on the existence of new Airbnbs. And we're working with a new consultant to start going, going after Airbnbs that exist without that permit. So this is obviously an issue that we're very aware of. It does take from housing stock and it's something we're concerned about and definitely working on as a city. So maybe that's why it wasn't mentioned, because it is something that we're already starting to target. I don't know if you have more to add?
No, you've got it.
I'm being of the boomer generation and more of the early wave of it. I'm looking at my friends who, you know, some of them living in fairly large houses who would like to move to smaller places. And when a couple, you know, when one member of the couple dies, often the houses they're living in are too, really too big to keep. And wondering if that is, and we do have a large population of seniors here. And wondering if that is being factored in to the calculations? Because when those houses become available, if there were places for those seniors to move, then they would take, they would provide a place for a family, a single family. Well, in a lot of cases, single-family dwelling.
Yeah, that kind of replacement. There's a little bit of the comment we had here. The piece of that is that people that have the means, do they want those houses? And so that's, you know, and that's to be determined, so.
I'd like to ask a question with respect to the deed restrictions. So working in the lending industry, the current deed restrictions on the BMR properties that have existing don't work with probably like 90% of the lenders out there. I would ask that the council or the committee advise or work to ask lenders, especially ones that use either Fannie Freddie, to make sure that they're able to do lends. Because if there's not enough lenders, then it kind of, you know, and I think the last time, the only big bank lender that was able to do the deed restricted properties was Citibank and they're not even in town anymore. So I would just like to say please solicit help or advice from lending institutions, especially the ones that are operating in the city because we would all like to help the local citizens buy houses through our companies.
And this was for sale? You're talking about for sale?
Correct.
Deed restricted property?
Yeah.
Yeah. And where the state of things are here in Sonoma. But that's a great question. And so maybe on the next thing, when we get to our next sessions, we should look at what's happening in those other areas. So this, good, good feedback.
And I would like to add something on that note. You know, housing has been, it's something for at least the last four years, we've been really wanting to talk about it. But it's such a complex subject that it's often hard to talk about because there's so many different ways you could talk about housing. So this series, we are thinking about housing production. We're about to go into our general plan update. We're going to be planning the future of what the city is going to look like. And so one of the things that we're looking at is as we are developing our future city, how should we be doing this in a way that's going to provide housing that is going to be helpful and that to avoid building more housing that is going to be less helpful? So this is one piece. The housing committee, subcommittee is also working on other pieces. There are many pieces involved and I appreciate you all coming on this journey. So this is step one. I'm excited to get to step three, but we have to get through these pieces first to learn all these things. So there certainly are things on the list that are not going to be covered in our series, but that does not mean that they are not being actively discussed by the city.
Do you have to do public comment? Is there anybody that's going to want to make comment just to make sure we're reserved?
Are there any other questions? One last question, then we'll move into public comment.
Could you speak a little bit to?
Could you speak a little bit to, to the, the role of displaced families and how that relates to like the, the arena housing stock? And, and it seems like there's not a good way to account for displacement or for, say, the housing market being kind of stacked on the high end by second homeowners or stuff, so the people talk about how the local market here is distorted that way, but it doesn't seem like there's any metrics to capture the people who are displaced, or how you're not having that mix as it's, as it's not, say, reflected in the type of buildings like the, you know, you had the 60-40. I'm just curious about the actual demographic mix and what kind of criteria could be used to capture that.
That's, that's a great question, and I, I cannot speak to that, I don't know if anybody is, if there's any, if anybody is tracking that, is that, or again, that's maybe one of the metrics that we need to develop. I know when I told the story about the recent purchase of an apartment complex in Healdsburg, that was shortly after another one had changed hands like that, and there were nine families displaced, and that in some ways created a lot of the, both emotional as well as urgency around, you know, we need a solution for those kind of things, as opposed to somebody said more than just production, so.
Close the session down after that, so if you have public comments, I don't know if I'm going to hand you the microphone, I guess just if you form a line, and then just hand it back to the person behind you, so just if you want to do public comment, right here? In the middle, okay, right here, right here, this little further back? Okay, sure, you could turn around too, you could...
So, Logan, too, in terms of public comment, I am going to kind of limit to three minutes for folks to, you know, want it, it would be great if folks could stay. Do we have a sense of how many folks want to do public comment? Because just want to be respectful at once, okay, so just a couple, we'll go, thanks.
Hi, good evening, council members, staff, and members of the public, thank you very much, that was an excellent presentation. I just had some comments on the presentation, some clarifications, I guess they could have been questions. One was on the ADU and the, the concept of affordable by design. I'm just wondering if there has been any research or long-term studies showing that the so-called affordable by design really works? It's kind of a concept I've heard, but in places like Silicon Valley, a, you know, you can rent a closet for $3,000, so I'm not sure, you know, I'd like to see a little more evidence that that is actually something that works going forward as appropriate. Also, would like to see some other perspectives shared, particularly when you're talking about the approval process and discretionary. The impression I got in the presentation was that discretionary approvals were somehow not ideal, and they are, I understand, problematic perhaps for developers, but they also provide a lot of really great public benefit in terms of public review, in terms of environmental protection, and in terms of getting really good projects, so it's not just something that is like a pain for developers, it's really a benefit in a lot of ways, so I'm hoping some of that will be added. And then the one, the one slide on Healdsburg, that has a lot of the similarities with the city of Sonoma, one thing that they also do have is an urban growth boundary, that's been renewed and has not been needed to expand in any way, they've extended it, and they've still been able to do that really amazing affordable housing work. So, thank you very much.
Kathy, wave your hand when I'm supposed to stop, okay. I'm Dave Ransom, I live in Santa Rosa, I go to church in Sonoma, I'm a part of the Sonoma Valley Housing Group and a part of the Spiritual Action Group of Methodist Church. It was great to hear all of this information, but I suspect that Healdsburg doesn't have two-thirds to three-quarters of its people living outside the city boundaries, and that is the case here. The Springs is, is, is our, the other side of the tracks, if you will, right? And, and it is ripe for development of the sort that we have seen in the city of Sonoma, which will be detrimental to our population. I, I think that we need to, it's, it's a very difficult situation, I understand for the, for the city staff and for the city council, but I think it's something that we need grasp, because I don't think we can solve the problem inside the city limits. The other part is that I think preservation and protection are very important parts of solving this. We're seeing that people are living, leaving the county in droves, the, the PD reported at 3,000 in the last year, and, and, and that certainly is the case in, in Sonoma. Your, your statistics show that for the city, but it's also true for these, for the Springs, that are people, people are not able to live here anymore, and the people that come in don't, don't necessarily work here. So, I think that we need to, we also understand very well where the developments in Santa, in the Sacramento are leaving us in terms of rent control, just cause eviction, legal support for people who are being evicted, those are three elements of the CASA plan, the three tenant-friendly aspects of the CASA plan that, that got sort of separated, and we need to understand that. Is that my signal? Oh, okay, thank you. And in addition, there is a tremendous opportunity for existing facilities developing low-income housing in the Sonoma Developmental Center, the, which is a part of greater Sonoma, if you will. The state has given us three years to, to work on that, we understand that there are dormitories there which are currently usable, and there's no reason that we shouldn't go ahead and take care, take care, take that into account. Finally, I, I think what we're looking at is that first, the market has failed AMI housing, AMI, the most, most Americans, because you're talking about, I think, 40% that can afford to live, live here, and it's true of other parts of the country too. And, and I do think that we need to think in terms of public ownership of whatever we produce, and that we can look forward to public banking to help us finance that.
My name's David Eiker, and I think the Sonoma County, they did a survey of housing, came out, I think it was a couple of years ago, and about 10% of the houses in Sonoma County are second homes, and there are another 10% that were vacant or other, like don't know what they're used for. And I think one of the things that the city's going to have to look at would be, if you build all these houses, how are you going to make sure that they're not just bought by people, you know, for second homes, that they're built for people that are working here in the city of Sonoma or in the Sonoma Valley?
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Awesome, so Amy's not here, so I'm mayor for 30 seconds. The power! I really want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know it's, it's, it's tough to break out of your daily schedules and time and come and speak about housing issues, but these are really, really crucial, important issues to the community, and I really appreciate all of you coming out to listen. This is part of a three-part series, so we've got our first part tonight, our second part is going to be more of a discussion base with affordable housing developers and market rate developers, and then our third will be where we're working together as a community to define where we see the future of housing in the city of Sonoma. I'd really like to thank Jim, incredible presentation, and I really appreciate everything that he did for us tonight, thank you. Big round of applause. And, and to city staff, I know David, Kathy, Sarah, everybody worked, Wendy, worked really hard to put this all together and to get this done, so we can give a round of applause for them, this is a lot of extra work for our city staff. And of course, to my, to my partner on housing, Rachel Hunley, and thank you so much, and I guess to me, because I did stuff too. So, the next town hall will be on May 16th here in Vintage House at 6:00 PM as well. Please invite people to come, please fill out our exit survey, you will find it right there on your chairs, please fill that out. If you have friends that want to come to the second town hall, this first town hall has been recorded, it will be available on the city of Sonoma's YouTube page, it will be available at sonomatv.org, it will be available on the Sonoma City website, so please pass that along to them, get them to come out. I'd like to see more people for our second town hall, though this was a very good turnout. And please do fill out the pamphlet on the chair and bring your flyer to your friends. Thank you very much, I very much appreciate you coming out tonight, and I'll, that'll close the meeting, good night, thank you.